Hmm? No, there it is. It's good.
I see you have survived.
Yeah. Okay. I put your... See it in there too.
Okay.
Did you see that?
Yeah. Page three.
Yeah. Oh, I like this. This is my normal. That's why, you know, when I first started watching you. Okay, I'm gonna fit in. And then everybody... Okay, so there's a... There's a blam. Can't be too stuffy. Well, I... I do hope we still have a right to... I don't want any... We didn't do anything. Thank you. All right, good deal. Good, good. Thank you.
It is 5:59, so he's about to start the meeting. Okay. Yes, Mayor, we do. I don't think the mics are working.
There you go.
Okay. Perfect.
Perfect. We called the meeting order at 6:00 P.M.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good.
Next item is item two, invocation and pledge of allegiance to the American and Texas flags, and our invocation will be given by Daniel Ledford with Calvary Baptist Church.
Please stand.
Let's pray together. Father, we thank you for the privilege to come and do things to help our neighborhood, and, Lord, we thank you that we have good people here that are wanting the best for our area. I pray you'll bless them as they make decisions tonight, and, Lord, we pray you'll just bless this area so that we would honor you in all that we do, and, Lord, that when people come to this area, that they would know that you are honored here. Lord, we just make a difference and make you look good. All these things we ask and thank you for. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All right, next, please.
Next is agenda item 3A, DPS bond and project timeline.
Mr. Gilbert.
Mayor and Council, good evening. We just wanted to give you, after our discussion... Let me see. If I can get this open here. After our meeting last week, we kind of talked about a timeline of estimation for the project and the bid. So nothing really... Now, again, this is preliminary, and then based on some different factors can alter or change the outcome here. But some of the numbers are... The hard numbers are, once we obtain the architect, it's about six to eight months to get the drawings for that construction for the new build, 12 to 14 months. Southside remodel, eight months. The downtown fire station, about six months, and then the ladder truck, about 18 months. So, again, this timeline is our best guess judgment. If we initiate now, we're hoping to come to you in March with our selection for architects, and then we can get that service kicked off. I've got April 30th there, and again, just being conservative on that guess. And then again, showing that timeline of six to eight months there to get the bid and all the drawings, starting construction October-ish, right? Is that what I got? Yeah. Or, yeah, I'm starting construction on the new build in January. Now, of course, the construction on the south side, that's, I guess, a big component of that is staffing, so that's why we have that slotted at that location that we do. And then also with the downtown rehab, we have that kind of finishing up at the same time as the new construction for the police station, again, because of personnel transferring and the need to operate on a day-to-day basis as we are now. So, nothing too crazy, but...
I got a question for you.
Yeah.
So, can you put dependencies in here? Like you said, the Sasa rehab has dependencies on staffing, right?
Sure.
So, can you get a bit of dependency charts in there, like agriculture services, base park, you know, assigned contract, right? So, you put dependencies in there somehow, so we know that there is future decisions to be made that will impact the schedule. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, sure. I can put a table down below that discusses south side, the completion of south side and what that obligates us, you think, Chief?
Yeah.
You know, and then, of course, again, with the downtown, because of, you know, being able to operate today and what they need to do every day, that's kind of has to determine that time, that timeframe as well.
The first good one is going to be the ladder truck purchase, which is coming fairly quickly.
Yeah.
Right after we get closing, so we don't... We don't actually have funds yet. Closing is 10 days, Reggie?
I have... We have the bid schedule here as well.
27th. 27th, we'll have funds in the account. That enables us to come to you at the... On the March 3rd meeting for approval for the ladder truck order.
Okay. Thank you. Lance, any questions?
Okay. Thanks, y'all.
And you put this online, and the reason for the dependencies, when it gets online, people can understand, they'll back after a couple of months, look at it. We know there's dependencies on it, right? That's why.
So, well, I would add this too. So, of course, this one is our preliminary. I think once we have services...
Yeah.
We'll be able to provide a better timeframe.
And you'll put the concept plans online, and all the speak and say it, as we... When you get approved, right?
Sure. As we go, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's just more we put out there.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we'll have our project out there showing progress and where we are with the timing and all that, sure.
Yeah, but it's too many times, public just forgets. Couple of years later, then rumors start, and we get to have a good, you know, here's the con... Here's what we did. It'd be great. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Next, Vicki, please.
Next is...
I'm sorry. I... Just again, I'm sorry. Mark, any questions? I'm sorry. I apologize. Cardi, I apologize. That's my bad. I'm sorry about that, guys. You good? All right. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Now, we can go on, Vicki.
Okay. Item four, public comment. I've received two requests to address the council, first being from Karen Kaiser, address 1093 North Churchill Drive.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Karen Kaiser, 1093 North Churchill. I just came out this evening to say thank you to Councilmember Harper, among others. I've mentioned that we've gone and hung out at the Wednesday senior group that I hope everyone knows, they have, unless it gets closed due to weather, and a nice lady came up to Mark and said, "I'd come to City Hall, but I can't open the darn door." And I don't think the day ended before he was talking to our assistant city manager, and now the button is out there. Open door. It just makes City Hall so accessible, not just for the elder, for all kinds of people. And I just appreciate... It just, to me, seemed like the magic of the government. She asked, he heard her, he went to the right person, and it's done, and it makes a huge difference to a lot of people. So, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate it. Next, please.
Next is Joanne Yott, address 808 Horton.
Joanne Yott, 808 Horton, Fait. My public comments are on transparency and accountability. We hear a lot about that today in government. I have spoken previously asking why a city with a population of less than, and maybe it's 30,000 now, but less than 30,000 people needs a city manager and an assistant city manager. Obviously, that comment went on deaf ears because shortly thereafter, a second assistant manager was hired. May I remind this group that less than, when I talked about this the last time, less than 10% of similar cities this size have a city manager, let alone all these assistants. Now, what is this costing us? Probably a half a million dollars, give or take. Okay, next. I, for one, American citizen, am thrilled to have Doge operating in Washington, D.C., and I would love to have Doge operating in Fait, Texas, looking at the actions of the mayor and the city council for the past three years. So, what should Doge look at? For starters, I would say the expense account submissions for the city manager and the mayor. Last year, there were jokes made from the elected members, and I'm not sure who made the joke, at a council meeting about who was running the show when the city manager, the assistant manager, and the mayor were in Austin for a week or more. Has anyone ever answered that question? And why any of these individuals should even travel to Austin is another big boogaboo of mine, when this council voted to give $70,000 to a lobbying group to tell this group what the heck was happening in Austin. Another area for Doge audits would be to look at every single contract that has been signed with the amount paid for every single department at Fait City Hall. Thirdly, what local groups, charities, and private companies get subsidies and the amount of money that's given to these charities and companies? I'd love to know. We need a line-by-line budget review prior to any budget agreed upon by this council, and no more executive meetings behind closed doors to make these decisions. Now, that would show the Fait City taxpayers real transparency and accountability. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Next is item five, consent agenda.
I'll make the most and we accept consent agenda.
Second. Okay, I'm sorry. Who made the motion? But I have my mic off. Who had the second? Any more discussion? Please vote. Motion passes six to one with Councilman Kelly Ashing, not present tonight, so... Okay. Six to zero. I'm sorry. Apologize. Six to zero with council. All right, next, please.
Next is agenda item 6A, discuss, consider, and take any necessary action regarding resolution number R-2025-009, nominating a candidate for appointment to a vacancy on the Rockwall Central Appraisal District Board of Directors.
All right. Michael, you want me to take this one? Or you want to go ahead?
Sure. Yeah, you or I can talk about this, or both of us.
Both of us, because...
So, we got a letter, the mayor got a letter, I got a letter, and of course, this is to talk about the vacancy that's on the Arcad Board, so the appraisal district, and so we have an opportunity to nominate someone if we so choose, and information's in the package.
Okay, yeah. We just want to do it this time, so any nominations?
Nominate Lance McGessie.
I want a motion for Lance. Any other nominations? Okay, seen then. Lance, you go with that? All right, I will take a motion then, please.
Make a motion that we nominate Lance McGessie for the vacancy on the Rockwall Central Appraisal District, as he is a big supporter.
I have a motion. I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, just... Motion passes five to one with Councilman Hadley voting now. Next, please.
Next is agenda item seven, Mayor, Council, and City Manager Reports.
All right, who wants... Cardi, you want to start? Or I can start the other end if you like.
I have no comments.
Mark Harper.
Just wanted to say that we've opened a couple of new businesses here. Fait Village Tavern opened this last week. Lots of people showed up there. Good, good business, and Red Dirt Social also opened downtown, another nice Fait business to go to, and thanks to the city staff, all those who helped get the button installed. I know that that's going to make it easier for some people who couldn't even come pay their water bill, so appreciate it. Thanks.
Yes, the light at Ben Payne and 66 is operational. I don't believe it's timed correctly yet, but get some... Have a little bit of patience, and we'll get through it, but, you know, just pay attention to what's going on around you when you drive. Two new businesses we've been... Have opened, Red Dirt Social and Fait Tavern, both excellent places. Encourage everyone to go visit and keep your taxpayers local. Thank you for city staff, everything that you do.
Mark Hadley. I'd like to thank Vicki for the Valentine candy. Thank you. I'd like to also thank the DPS. They did a great job, and I think what we all know was a... An arrest of a dangerous individual, and hopefully, everybody will, when the DPS does put out a bulletin like that, let... Kind of give them time to, and trust that they're running that investigation very, very carefully, and I know everybody's got questions and things like that, but it's... I do trust our DPS very, very much. They are, I think, second to none, and I think our position as the sixth safest city in Fait proves that. But I'd like to thank all of the people who applied for city council and mayor. Hopefully, we have a good group of candidates up there, and... But I'd like to say thank you to everybody who filled out the application. Thanks. Lance?
Thanks to city staff for everything that you guys do each and every single day. Without you, the city would grind to a halt, and Ben Payne is open. Yay, I've been on your cases now for the last six months, being late, 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 every week. How come it's not open? And like Alan said, please, while people are getting used to traffic patterns and the slowdowns and the timing, it's going to take some patience to get through there. Driving over here tonight, I saw 30 cars on it coming, so it is working. Thanks.
All right, so thank you. So, Ben Payne Light, exciting, and we got it up, so I really want to spend some time in thanking Center Hall staff, Encore, Texon, Chief, city staff. We worked really hard behind the scenes. We don't normally, a lot of times, we don't brag about on social media what we do behind the scenes, but we work hard at a lot of stuff, and one thing, we did work really hard to get this done on time. It was a couple of weeks late, but we got a lot of obstacles. Clarify Center Hall's office, who really worked with Texon and Encore, stepped to the plate to get that done, and then we worked with some Center Hall's office in Austin to make sure that Texon gets some feedback on the process, on how we do that, so I just want to make that comment. Chief, things are going to do, great rest, good job, or great job, I'm sorry. Great job all, and Michael, as always, thank you for everything that you guys do. Appreciate it. And you're next.
Okay. So, this Thursday, the 20th, 6:00 P.M., we have a P&amp;Z meeting, and then next Monday, the 24th, at 6:00 P.M., we have our strategic planning meeting, number one, our workshop number one. We'll have another one in the next month, in March, and then if some of you are registered on the 27th coming up, there is a 6:00 P.M. If you've registered for that, we do just want to give you a reminder, the Rockwall Chamber has a banquet. That is it. And then just, of course, prepare for freezing temperatures. We're working on all that. Everyone's... Public rest has already started, and so we'll be ready for the freeze.
All right. Next, please, Vicki.
Next is agenda item eight, executive session. In accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 551.001, the city council will address into executive session, closed meeting, to discuss the following. A, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, one, Chapter 43, Texas Local Government Code Development Agreements for Rockwall CAD Property IDs 11195, 11227, 83532, and 83531, and annexation law.
Hey, Jennifer, I want to pitch you on the spot for a second. You don't mind, sorry. So, you want to explain why they work on executive session for this?
Sure. In Texas, there are several reasons you can go into executive session, one of which, which is reflected here, is consultation with an attorney to protect the attorney-client privilege, so that I can give you frank and honest legal advice, and any... No actions ever taken in executive session, no matter what the reason is, and so it's just... For this, it'd be just giving y'all legal advice.
And then number two, this is prescribed by state law, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll take an executive session at 6:18, Vicki? 6:18?
Yes, 6:18 for the record.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.